Good morning, everybody. Sorry, I'm running a little behind this morning.
So many lambs?
Yeah, yeah, yes, literally. If we could rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is Monday, April 5th. We have minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 15th meeting? That was a Zoom meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have minutes to approve of a meeting held on March 24th here at the Belmont Mill. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move into new business, and our first order this morning is a new hire by the Belmont Fire Department.
Yes, and Chief Newhall is here to go over that with you. Mike, it might be easier so that it's on the microphone if you use the podium, if you don't mind?
I do not.
Thank you.
The retirement of Gina Harris, who was with us for seventeen years. We have obviously a vacancy. We did, we put out for applications, we got a few in. We did our oral boards and process, and Tom Ryan came out as our top candidate, so I'm recommending that we hire him.
Now, he's not a paramedic though, right?
Correct.
Okay, where Gina was.
Correct. He did not have any paramedics apply. Well, that is not correct. We had a couple from out of state, but way out of state.
Way, way out of state, yeah. Okay. So I guess my question, just for my own, well, maybe everybody else's interest, and I'm not sure, is that how are you going to fill the void with Gina gone being a paramedic? Because I know obviously that's important, the paramedic end of it.
Well, Gina always wanted one shift ahead of paramedic on it at this point anyways, myself, Deb Black, and Andy Fichette picks up a lot of our paramedic calls, so I think we continue on with that. That's all I have to do.
Do you have anyone at this point that's within your department that's training to be a paramedic?
Not as of right now.
Not as of right now, okay, all right.
Now, we have this money in the budget for his salary, thirty-nine thousand?
Yes, because Gina's, with Gina's retirement, it's the same. He'll be filling that slot.
But he wouldn't be at the same pay grade.
He'd be less, correct.
Correct, yep. He'll be at grade nine, step one, which is thirty-nine, nine oh two sixty-six.
Well, she was a paramedic, and with years, it was quite a bit.
Quite a bit different, yep, yep. And her salary would have been in your approved budget, yep, okay. All right, all right. Do we need a motion to accept that? Is that what we need to do? All right, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion for Thomas Ryan, for the full-time position of a day firefighter with the Belmont Police Department, with a potential date of April 11th.
Fire Department.
Fire Department, excuse me, I'm sorry. Fire Department, April 11th. I was right about the date more than anything.
With what, with what?
Well, we changed the date.
We did, it was originally April four.
I put my card ahead of myself, so Jean corrected me on that one, so.
I didn't pick up on that, you're right.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the next meeting, I'll have Tom come in with me. I just wanted to get this done first.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you, thank you.
May I recommend something before you leave?
Yes, sir.
In the memo that we received last week about this, we received it, it might have been wise if that memo was typed the same way you presented it today.
Okay.
Because I know that one of us, at least me, thought this was an additional hire and was wondering where you were going to come with the money. With Gina going out, the salve indifference, this is, this is a smart move. I mean, it justifies what you're doing easily.
No problem, I'll do that next time. Thank you.
Awesome, all right. Quarterly update from our code enforcements.
How long are we going to be here today?
A long time. We have a busy morning.
You do have a very busy morning.
That's all right. So these are what you might say is called active cases?
Yeah, yeah. The past six months, I'm averaging about three, about three a month right now on the issues that we have in town here. For the record, we're building officially.
Oh, sorry, what did I call him?
Oh, no, no, you were.
Oh, all right, I was gonna say, did I call you something wrong? What did I call you anyway?
No, no.
Sorry.
I've been called a lot of things, but no, you were correct. Yeah, so I have, you know, what I've listed down, you know, what is possible litigation in the very near future, and ones that have been closed out, not many of those, but they seem to be working, you know, with me. It takes a while, it's not like, you know, the first letter that goes out, it takes time for them to act, two or three letters afterwards. But I think, you know, some of these addresses that you probably, all you select and see, are probably ones that have been ongoing well before my time.
Yep, a lot of them familiar.
Yeah.
Do you have contact with the state? We, before you came to work here, we had an awful, I'd say awful battle. We tried three or four times with the state of New Hampshire on the property that's actually on the corner of Wildlife Boulevard and 106. The property is actually fronted on 106, but they have access, if they cut through the corner of Wildlife Boulevard to the property.
Okay.
The state went out and put some barriers up, and now, these people have now moved the barriers. Those big cement barriers have been moved, so they can gain access, which used to be a bounty fence. They took the fence down, and then they have moved the barriers. I don't know if you've met anybody yet.
No, I haven't, John, but I did notice that about a month ago, the state came back there and repositioned the barriers, and I saw the owner coming out, you know, making his case, I guess, but.
And since then, the people have moved them, so.
Oh, have they? It looks like they are still in place.
They don't have an access from that property.
Right, they don't.
They don't.
And I've just sworn that they.
They blocked, they kind of pinched it off, so you could walk through there, but you couldn't drive through there.
Right, exactly.
Well, now they've got it opened up again, and it's pretty obvious, I mean, we're out on the back roads, but this is, I mean, they're running a pretty boat, I guess you'd.
Yeah, when did they open it up? Because I just sworn that the barriers were on the front entrance of 106.
What's that?
Last week, when we went by, they had a trailer stuck in there.
Yeah, they had a trailer in, but.
Right, and that's where I thought the state pushed that barrier right against that trailer, so he couldn't.
What would happen if they, if they had a fire in there? How are they going to get that fire truck in there?
They're not.
Because they're living in the back garage, there's people living overhead in that garage.
Are they? But I have no contact with the state. I, if you have any ideas of, you know, who I can contact, I'd be more than happy to.
I would think that it was DOT Division Three that must have organized the.
Actually, I have a name, and I will call you with it, because I got hooked up with the lady at the state through them, because the New Hampshire DOT said they couldn't do much for us.
Okay, so the Bureau of Right of Way?
And so they, they got involved, because it's in the Bureau of State Land Uses. The state took that land, it used to be a restaurant on the corner. And their land got polluted due to a state problem, and a pit that used to be out back, and that, they controlled that. And it took them about eight months from the phone call I had with this lady, she was the assistant down there to the director. But then the DOT did come and put those, that's who put them there, but they had to have an order, so they do it.
I can send you the Bureau of Right of Way's contact information.
Okay, I appreciate it. And the other thing, it was, I know we talked about this, quite some time ago, about vehicles that were unregistered, but not in people's names, and no titles, so maybe we can sometime get together and just, so who I can contact in getting these vehicles out of the properties, if you know anybody.
You give me the VIN numbers, I'll get you the titles.
Okay. I know we discussed this, you know.
If you get the VIN numbers of the vehicles, I can get that.
So what's your opinion on Sylvia? How just, how are you going to work with that? What do you think's going to happen?
Well, I'm going to make sure that I have a strong case, obviously, because I don't like going to court and walking out as a loser, so. It's taking time. I'm talking, discussing with the Mitchell Group now, giving her as much information as I can. He's, again, it's like I said, he's there, but I don't think he's living there. And so this is something that I want to be real careful, walking on, walking on glass, so. I'm just, I'm just trying to feed her as much information as I can, pictures, and just document everything I can.
And I think, obviously, not to interrupt Sonny, but probably that's something that should be discussed in non-public, all right, instead of, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's part of this. Part of this, and the public should know somewhat of what's going on there too, it's ever right.
Well.
Yeah, it's just, it's ongoing. It's like I said, right now, it's just, it's just discussions between myself and the Mitchell Group, and how to proceed.
Legal, it's legal.
It is, it is back in their hands to work with Russ, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know that the last person's name on that list also, I know that he has been in the hospital.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe he's in rehab, and I believe a family member or whatever is, has done some clean out inside, probably to prepare for him to be able to come home, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, I heard that too, Ruth, and so I'm just kind of, not laying low on it.
It still has to be taken care of, but.
And the tenant did call me, and I guess he's, he's made some progress. He's removed a couple of vehicles.
All right, good.
So I'm actually going down there this afternoon to see what's, what's been going on.
Awesome, all right, good.
And that's what we have for the first six months.
It's, yep. And I'm sure we're not the only town dealing with this type of stuff, that's for sure, but it does get discouraging.
Well, it's bad for the neighbors, it's bad for the taxation. I mean, you have a nice house, and they put it across the street. The guy on CB Road across the street, there's a half a million dollar, three quarters of a million dollar house looking at junkyard. It wasn't a junkyard, it was a nice piece of property.
Well, and I was shocked at the one on Johnson Street. And I was shocked when I ever went, I, I have no reason, I guess, to go down that, you know, I don't use that. And when I made a point, I was shocked. I was shocked, yep. You know, in a lot of these places, like the one on 106, the one on Johnson, if that had have started on fire, especially, especially right now, with the fire danger as bad as it is.
Sure.
Wow, top of that whole hill could go.
I would think so. It's a mess up there. And that one's been ongoing, obviously, well before my time on that one.
Understood. No, I know. You, you've inherited.
Yes, and good, good work.
You've inherited, you have.
They're almost growing faster than you can, can't pick the corn fast enough.
You're right, that's exactly right, yep, awesome. I have no questions, John, any?
No, thank you for your update.
But, yes, we appreciate this. This is just kind of nice to know that, because sometimes we all get phone calls about certain things, so it helps, that's for sure. Not that these people can't call you, but, you know.
No, I understand. It's a lot of people, they know you, they've got to go to you first, and relay the message.
Yeah, awesome. I appreciate it very much.
No, you're welcome.
Any questions, Sonny?
No, no.
All right, awesome, thank you very much.
You have in your packet this morning a letter from Joe Rolfe, who would like you to consider amending the town's noise ordinance relative to farming and agricultural activities. And he has explained his reasons for the request in his letter.
Oh, what is it? Does it say in the ordinance that you can't?
It, well, the noise ordinance, it doesn't specifically exempt them. What he's looking for is a specific exemption to farming and agriculture, so I.
Is it, well, what does it?
Is it possible to give him an exemption for his, what he's talking about?
It's spraying, I understand, spraying, no doubt, trees.
I understand what he's trying to do, but it seems to me if we, if we get into this exemption, and if someone lives in the farming area, and they're out making their own gravel pit at eight or nine o'clock at night, we're going to open up a can of worms.
Well, because, what is the noise at this point? Noise ordinance, is there a time that it's supposed to stop?
Yes, it goes from ten, ten at night until seven in the morning, am I right, Mark?
Oh, all right, I was gonna say, I guess I'm not hanging at ten o'clock at night, or I'm in the barn by ten at night. I'm thinking to myself, am I been illegal? And again, I mean, obviously, living between two pits in town that have noise, they're not supposed to set vehicles to a certain time, and they don't abide by it. Because four-thirty in the morning, I can totally guarantee, as soon as the, the road bans come off, that equipment starts, okay? And they're not even abiding by their own regulations, and that was given through what, planning? Is that planning that gives those regulations?
The noise ordinance is specific to the town. The Board of Selectmen adopted the noise, the noise ordinance, correct.
Okay, all right, because that's not happening.
And the police department is the enforcement agency.
Right. And we've shut down many of pit in the morning, because they won't start operation until seven, but they'll start and warm up.
Beep, beep, beep.
To get it ready.
Oh, sure, and they're moving.
They're greasing, they're doing their things, getting ready, but they're not working.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, right. So we go in there, we tell them, and sure enough, they, they'll do it, and a month later, we're back.
Back again.
Because it might be a different person in there now.
Sure, sure.
Mr. DeTille has been very appreciative of your efforts over on Levitt Road. He's been continuously contacting me with concerns, but he's been very pleased.
Well, you know, I mean, I know that it's, it isn't even so much the equipment as the beep, that's life.
Well, and Mr. DeTille's, and the other, the people on the Levitt Road, is using the jake brake.
Oh, is that what it, oh.
And that's a problem. You know, six o'clock in the morning, they're heading to the pit, which is fine.
Yeah.
But they're powering up the hill, the jake and coming down the hill.
Yeah.
They a problem.
Yeah.
So we've, we've talked to them, there's been conversations with the owner regarding.
Yeah.
Not initiating the jake.
But I suppose like.
They've staged it on 106 prior to the time, and so little by little, they're, they're, they're getting it, but.
And I suppose a lot of those companies subcontract trucks, then you get a whole new group to educate.
Jean, he refers to Londonderry as a, an exempt list in his paragraph. Other towns such as one very include a farming, and they're exempt list. Do we have an exempt list?
We do not have an exempt list, but let me give you an example of what, so for example, Mr. DeTille called me the other day, or actually sent me an email, and he was concerned that a property that is fairly close to him has a commercial dumpster, and that the dumpster company comes and picks the dumpster up early in the morning, typically before seven. But if you go through the noise ordinance, that activity isn't even mentioned in the noise ordinance. So I had recommended that Mr. DeTille contact the waste company, and they agreed that they would try to come later and pick the dumpster up. In looking at the noise ordinance, I don't see anything that even speaks to agricultural or farming as being an issue as far as, we have a list of items in the noise ordinance that are a problem, but we, if it's not identified, how would you treat that? I mean, I would assume you would not, if it's not identified, you wouldn't treat it, correct? So at this point, I don't know that we would be enforcing farming or agricultural situations. But I can certainly look at Londonderry's ordinance and see how they list it, and perhaps we could just amend it with a list.
He holds down a full-time position, he's a stonemason, so, and I understand, I have a friend that has bees, so I don't have any knowledge of them, but I know that they're fragile, and you can't be spraying while they're out, and it may be an occasion. So if we had an exempt list and exempted the spraying or this type of work at night in a farming situation, because we don't have that many farms left that are going to be doing that anyway.
Yep.
We have a list of items that are exempt, but not specific to, so for example, noise of safety signals, warning devices, and emergency pressure relief valves, whatever that may be.
Well, that's, yeah, safety signals, warning devices, or those loaders when they back up.
Yeah, when they're backing up, beep, beep, yeah.
So those technically, I guess, would be an exempt from the ordinance. Municipal maintenance work, noise resulting from activities of a temporary duration, snow blowers that are used to remove snow. So those are just a list of some of the things that are, I mean, I guess we could add a, and rather than listing the property individually, maybe we could just list that activity as exempt.
That's my thought.
Okay, we can draft something like that and bring that to your next meeting.
Now, he's talking about his sprayer, am I right? He sprays at nighttime, and that's the reason?
I'm assuming so, yes, yep, that's what he's saying, yeah.
Must spray the apple trees at night.
At nighttime, yeah, because.
Because then the bees are in their hive, so you're not killing the bees, yeah. And so the noise, I mean, I don't know how much noise a sprayer makes, it's probably just the tractor running.
It's a small tractor that he uses to haul it.
It's a gas-powered sprayer, it's like.
So it's got a motor on it or whatever?
Right, like the Orton on Levitt Road would be the same thing, they have a commercial sprayer that's gas-powered, pulled by a tractor, so. There's a, there's a fair amount of noise, and if it's at night, there's even more noise.
Yeah.
You know, you spray it once a week.
Yep. We would have to bring that to town meeting, unfortunately. It is a town that noise ordinance is through town meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll have to bring it back next year, but again, I don't see anything in the ordinance itself that would create any reason, so I'll notify him of that.
Did we have a complaint?
No, no.
He's just trying to head it off.
He's just trying to, he's trying to head it off at the pass. So I will write to him and just explain to him that there's nothing in the noise ordinance currently that would prohibit him, but that we will look to add an exemption in next year's noise ordinance.
And he only has a few homes in the area, like probably a packet. There'd probably be people who can go visit them, or at least warn them that, you know, hey, tomorrow night, I'm going to be spraying between this and this time zone. And if he can get the compliance that way, he's.
I can certainly suggest that.
We're not gonna get it called.
Yep, I can suggest that in the letter, that as a kind of a preempt, yep, okay, we can do that.
Belmont Road Race Authorization to Proceed.
Yes, so.
Send that on Facebook.
As you know, you have agreed to hold Old Home Day this year, and we've hired a new coordinator. In addition, we had, Jason Roberts did reach out, and Alicia spoke with him about organizing and running the road race. But he did want something from the Board of Selectmen, basically saying, yes, you were in favor of it going forward, because it certainly, they did not hold it last year because of COVID, but he was certainly willing to proceed with it this year if you are.
I don't have a problem. I guess if we can have Old Home Day, we ought to be able to have a road race. Probably the road race is, is safer than Old Home Day, when you're looking at people and whatever, so. And that include, how do you?
That requires a permit.
That requires a permit, but he must know, has he, oh, from the state?
And he typically, he typically is taking care of that.
He typically will get that sent to me, I'll sign off on it, it goes in, he gets, he gets the permit, because they're going to occupy 140.
Yeah, and then that puts you on notice, obviously, for policing where necessary or whatever.
Yeah, they pretty much take care of it, we lead the runners, and we get them off the main, main thoroughfare 140, and then after that, we just.
Yeah, kind of. Yep, all right, okay. Gentlemen, any, no?
I'm good.
Sonny? Yep, I guess he gets to go ahead then. Proceed, all right. Class six road request.
Yes, and Craig is here. This is a map of the property in question. It is located at 581 Union Road. If you could, and this is the class six road right here, which is Range Road. And what the request was, and Craig, if you'd like to kind of give them a little review, the request was to pave their driveway. But it does, it will touch on that class six portion of the town road.
So I got a request from 581, I believe it is, Union Road. That, technically, that driveway is a class six road. It attaches Union Road to Range Road. I approached Jean and asked her, because it is a class six road, they'd like to pave, they'd like to pave the entrance and do a parking area. My only concern, and I told Jean, was, you know, if, where technically, I don't know who technically is, has the ownership of the road, if it's basically, is it still town property? If someone, if they pave this road and they damage this road, what liability does the town have? So, you know, as long as we distinguish that we have no liability as far as that situation.
We're not plowing that or anything, that's.
Of course not, no, no. But like I said, if someone uses that, it's, and damages it, I just don't want, I just want to dot my i's and cross my t's, and make sure that the town is okay, you know.
Craig, show me on this map here where this road, I see the lot, and I see Range Road, where's this driveway going? I'm a little ignorant. There's Range Road.
Put the glasses on.
Our attorney does know that, that we have no liability for the class six road.
Yeah, and this must be Union Road.
Yep. This, this must be, probably, this is Union Road, so the driveway goes right, the driveway goes right next to the house. And it goes right, this must be Range Road.
Yeah.
So Range, Range Road is basically a continuance right into, right on the Union Road.
Yep, and Range Road's a dead-end road.
Yep, so this is basically, the entrance must be, it must be right here, and then what they want to do is put a parking area in here.
So it's a parking area for them?
Okay, yeah, so they're going to pave off, off Union Road to this parking area behind the house.
And do a parking area, exactly.
Who uses Range Road? The four-wheelers or the snow wheelers?
Oh, houses.
Oh.
It's houses all down this road, all along.
Range Road dead ends up on the James Down.
Oh, okay, all right.
So this is class six from, yeah, it's class six from this side to this side, onto Union Road. So, I mean, we've got, we've got to sign up, it says, class six road, non-maintained, at each end of this road.
So I guess.
I just didn't want to give permission without, or sign a permit without.
And I guess that's where the attorney's coming to play.
And what Laura had indicated was it was up to the Board of Selectmen to give permission for that to happen.
With the understanding that we're not liable.
And we're clearly not, yep.
All right, and a letter will be sent to them, and, or we will send a letter to them?
Craig would sign the driveway permit and authorize it.
But who's going to notify them that we don't have, that we're not liable for damage?
I have, I have the permit.
We could add it as a condition.
If Jean wants to add the language on the permit.
We could add it as a condition.
I think that would be.
I think that, I think that's a good idea, personally.
She could, she could give us the current verbiage, and we could go from there.
Yeah, it's not going to hurt, if nothing else, it's just, it's not just verbal, it's in writing, I think, unfortunately.
And I know that Mr. Mitchell is on the meeting this morning. He was, had stopped by this morning just to, to say that he was certainly willing to offer any comments on this request if you, if you had any questions, so, I don't know.
Do you have any comments, Ron, for us?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Sure can.
Okay. No, when Mr. Beaufault owned the place, the town used to plow up a little ways to the bottom of the hill. And when Townsend's bought the, the property before the law went there, the road was, was a lot narrower, and Townsend wanted to put a house up on the hill, and I suggested that he had to build the road up to town spec, so he, he abandoned that idea, but the town did get. that idea, but the town did get a 50-foot right-of-way, which is larger than what originally was there, and there used to be a barn on there that they removed because it was in the right-of-way, but it's just a maintenance problem for those folks, now I don't think it's a problem.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, next item is to accept an L chip.
Yes, we received our annual incentive from L chip for submitting our annual report to them in a timely manner, in the amount of $200. In the past, we have deposited that into the Heritage Fund, and I did notify Vicki Donovan that you were going to be discussing it and accepting the funds, and I didn't know if she wanted to give you an update on what the Heritage Commission may be doing, and Vicki is online right now.
Vicki, good morning, Vicki.
Good morning, how are you? Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah.
I'm in the Andover, Massachusetts, with babysitting my granddaughter, so I appreciate you having this meeting while she's napping, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
So you're going to give us an update on the Heritage Commission?
So what information do you want from me, I guess is where?
Well, Vicki, I had just thought if you had anything you wanted to update them on as to your plans for this coming year for the Heritage Commission, if there was anything.
Okay, yeah, we've had a little bit of a setback because of COVID. One of our members who's, it's Ben and Jill Roth, her, their 13-year-old came down with Crohn's disease, and so that's not a good thing for them to be involved with going to meetings and COVID event giving it to their child. And another member doesn't have Zoom, the capacity to do Zoom, so we've had three meetings that we've basically haven't been able to do because of COVID's spark or going up, but we are back on track, and we did videos of interviews last year, actually started at 219, and we're hoping to finish it up in 2020, and we were basically stuck in our tracks. And so we've gone to Plan B, and we're getting together a questionnaire to send to community members that, we've got a list of people that we feel could give some information about Belmont's past. Ron, we were supposed to actually interview you, if you remember, and we had to cancel because of COVID, so you're on that list, that we will contact you by paper, so, and actually Sunny's been getting email from us on that, so that's the big thing, that we've had to do a different plan of attack. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Oh, good. We're looking at doing the banners, getting back to getting more banners, and Jeanie's been great with that. And the Penn Stock is a big question as well, about shoring that up, and looking at a, actually, I think it was Woody that maybe has an architect person that might, an engineer that might look at that for nothing to see what it's, how stable or unstable it is. And the other thing that really has been put on the back burner is going to the elementary school to make a presentation to the students about the history of Belmont and exposing them to its history and historical buildings. So that being said, the only other thing that we're looking at, and I heard that you do have an organizer for our Old Home Day.
That's correct.
We do.
So we probably need to get in touch with that person to see what the guidelines are as to how we're going to be involved in that.
I will ask Alicia to send you her contact information, so that you have that.
Awesome, and that's it, like, if you have any questions, that's it in a nutshell.
May I say something?
Go ahead, yes, Ron.
Yeah, go ahead.
An area in town is called Mohawk Point, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's where the town beach is, and in the history before this town was settled, there was a large, the Mohawk Indians massacred a lot of the local Indians there, and I just think.
He froze.
Ron, you froze.
I guess he probably wants to add that to the, oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Guess Indians came back.
Think it would be nice if, and then we didn't hear that.
You froze, Ron, it cut out.
Oh, it did?
Yep.
It cut out when the massacre happened.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Vicki, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I'd like to hear what you said about, you think it would be nice if, and then I didn't hear what you said after that.
The area where the town beach is, if a placate could be put there, a historical marker indicating that the massacre that took place of the local Indians by the Mohawk Indians that came over from New York, if you look up in the town history, in Lancaster's history, or the, or, can't remember, the history of salmon indicates that, so.
Okay, well, when you get your little questionnaire, you will be able to write that down and remind us of that.
Well, I've got some other things too, so.
There's some work for you. Perfect, awesome. Okay, my granddaughter's sleeping, I can show you the little monitor that I have, so this is perfect, I'm not interrupting that, so thank you so much again, and I look forward to seeing you guys at some point.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you, Vic.
Should we vote on that driveway permit?
Yeah, should we vote on that driveway?
Yes, we can go back and take a motion on that, and I do need a motion to accept the $200 from L chip.
I'll make the motion to get a driveway permit issued for 581 Union Road.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we.
Can I have the permit, Jean, so I will drop that off to you?
All right, thank you.
And I'll make a motion to accept the L chip incentive monies in the amount of $200, and for that to be applied to the Heritage.
To the Heritage Fund.
To the Heritage Fund.
Yep.
Could I have a second for that?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too, Vicki.
Atlantic Broadband.
Yes, so as you know, we received a letter back in early January, which we did discuss at one of your meetings after that point, just indicating that they were interested in starting the franchise, cable franchise renewal process once again. The actual franchise agreement that we have is not up until December 31st, 2023, but it is quite a lengthy process. We have had our first meeting in Guilford last week of the Lakes Region Cable TV Consortium, which is the group of 13 communities that are part of this existing franchise agreement. As part of that process, Attorney Miller had recommended to us that we open the ascertainment process, which is a motion by the Board of Selectmen to do that, which allows residents in the community to send comments and concerns to me regarding their cable TV service. Again, it has nothing to do, we cannot, we have, the cable TV franchise agreement has nothing to do with the internet service that the community receives, unfortunately, it's not covered, it's not allowed under FCC guidelines, it's only the cable TV piece. But this would open the process so that they can send me their concerns, and they can be made part of the process of looking at the franchise agreement for renewal.
And other than watching this meeting today, how would they know that, that they could send?
I will put a notice out on the town's website, and we'll put it out on the town's Facebook page, that the process is open, and that they can send their comments to us. And when we send out the newsletter for the month of April, I'm sorry, it would be, we're in April, the month of May, we would include a notice in there as well. Typically, you leave the ascertainment process open for about six months, so they'll have plenty of time to send their concerns if they have any, so. We just need a motion to do so, and the purpose of ascertainment is to assess the cable-related needs and interests of the community.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There, that way the proper wording.
Yes, thank you, and I will send.
I got that, I got that, hang on.
Yes, I will send Mr. Bradley, the Director of Government Affairs at Atlantic Broadband, a letter acknowledging that you've opened the process and we are underway.
And I think my only comment will be, you know, yes, you're going to put it in May's newsletter, but then I think it would be wise to put it in.
Oh, each month for the process?
Yep, just so that then no one can, right, that's exactly right, yes. Thank you. Any other new business?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, we'll move on to old business.
Yes, so we have not updated the town's investment policy in a couple of years, it's typically part of the audit process. It has been reviewed by Northway Bank to make certain that we are in compliance with their, or that our deposits are in compliance with the town's investment policy, and they have assured me they are. Basically, I did not make any changes to the policy, other than to update the date, so I'd just be looking for you to re-adopt the existing investment policy as of today's date, we'll forward that to the auditors. They are currently underway right now, they are auditing our books via an online process, so they'll be coordinating with department heads and so forth that are involved in that process. They have all of the records from each of the departments, we've uploaded them to a portal, so that they can review them and contact each, typically, they work more closely with Cynthia and with Denise than with anybody else, so, but they are underway, so I just need you to re-adopt the policy, and we'll be good.
Who's our third-party custody and safekeeping procedures, who's in charge of that?
We do not technically have a third party, other than our auditors and Northway Bank, whom we have all of our deposits with, I would assume that they would be our third-party contact. They maintain and collateralize all of our funds, Northway Bank does.
But what, if I read this correctly, and I may not be reading it correctly, "To protect against all potential fraud and embezzlement, the assets of the town shall be secured through a third-party custody and safekeeping procedures, bearer instruments shall be bonded to protect the public against a possible embezzlement of our fees."
Correct, so our property liability insurance, Primex, does carry our bonds as far as those of us who need to be bonded.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So you need a motion?
Yes, to re-adopt the town's investment policy, and I'll pass it around for your signatures.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any other old business, Jean?
Just to update you that I have had, we've received two applications for the Finance Director's position. We have extensively advertised it on Indeed, in the NHMA municipal listings for employment, on the GFOA website, on the town's website, it was in the Laconia Daily Sun, it's now been uploaded to the union leader, so it is out there in force. We do have two, I do have two good candidates that have applied for the position, and we'll begin interviewing shortly to bring someone forward, hopefully, for that position.
Okay, all right, we're probably lucky we have two.
Yes, we did, we've gotten a few others from Indeed, but they've been, they've certainly not been anyone that we would consider, because we're looking for someone, obviously, with strong municipal background and municipal accounting and so forth, and we just haven't had.
I believe that was part of the ad in the race, correct?
Yes, it was, yep, yep.
Are we involved in that hiring process, or just you?
Basically, what will happen is I will interview the candidates, and then bring forth a candidate or two for you to participate in and have a conversation with, but we definitely, you know, are looking for someone who really has that strong background in finance, so.
Awesome, all right, any other old business? Uh, no, no. Then our next meeting at this point will be held April 19th at 10 o'clock here at the Belmont Mill.
No, you do have, I have not, we have non-public, correct, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. We have, we're going to have to go into non-public, we're going to have to, okay, we have no choice, we're going to non-public, 91-A colon 3.
Hey, Ruth?
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak some on old business.
Okay.
The last time, the last time we had one of these meetings there, you mentioned about the bank, and how you'd want to remove that.
Yeah.
I had second thoughts, I was always against that idea, but now that the issues of the fire department, I mean, the police department, it's been resolved by building a new one, and the, obviously, it looks like we'll move the town hall over to the mill here, the amount of money it would take to refurbish that building or make it worthwhile, but I don't know of anything that we need the building for, because the other issues have been taken care of, so I don't have any problems with, if you want to have a public hearing to remove that building and put it in at the same time with your breaking down and rule of fire station, police station, but I don't have any objections to it anymore.
Well, and I guess the other question, the other thing was, when we spent the monies for the feasibility study, obviously, they looked at what it could be used for, and due to the way it's built and cut up and whatever, that was their recommendations, which many taxpayers attended those meetings, so good to know, appreciate it.
Well, if you remember correctly, back then, we had issues, we, what we were going to do with the police station, town hall.
Yep.
And then if, you know, for expansion of the library, if you went in that direction, so that's my feeling anyway, so you know what.
All right, thank you.
All right. Chairman Mooney, I do have one additional item, this is actually a follow-up. Last week, we had heard from Barrett Salter at Bonnet Page and Stone that we had received a quote from Eversource to install the three-phase power line along Sergeant Street. The proposal came in at $96,000, and Barrett was just in a state of shock over that, because they had received a proposal, they believed, to be between $15,000 and $18,000.
That's correct.
So between myself and Barrett, we reached out to a number of our contacts, individual contacts with Eversource, and Barrett, to discuss whether or not it would be feasible to actually run the line up Fuller Street, which the board had already said they really didn't want to see that ugliness in front of the library, that it really would have, so he did confirm with Dave Simkins from Eversource that it would not be, it just, ecstatically, it would not look good to put that line in front of the library and then up Fuller Street. He worked closely with Dave, and between our emails expressing how concerned we were, they have cut that number in half, so we're basically looking at about $45,000 to do the install. He does have those funds in the contingency, and we'll be able to cover it, but it will come up School Street and down Sergeant Street, it's about 600 feet, well, it's actually about 900 feet of line, but apparently, you're entitled to 300 feet, that is part of your, whatever, so that we'll be paying for, yeah, we'll be paying for about 600 feet of that line, so Barrett wanted to make sure you knew that they have got the number down considerably from where it was at the end of last week, so.
I've never ever had a building, I've, and Ron can concur this, I've never ever been involved with a construction that there's not a surprise, correct, Ron?
And the governor and council meeting is on Wednesday this week, at which point that item should be on the agenda, I don't. I don't expect any issues with that, I think that will go forward and we, Barrett should be able to get going, I would think, on Thursday, once they've actually voted on it.
Good, awesome, all right, okay, now we'll do, now we'll go to non-public, correct?
I'm going, oh, nope, okay, I'll wait, all right.
Did you have something?
Only a non-public.
Oh, okay.
Cause there's a reminder here.
Yeah, I'm going to go shut, I'm going to go shut that off right now.
So non-public deemed, 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, letter.
You would be under letter B and C.
B and C, roll call.
Cindy Patton.
Ruth Mooney.
John Pike.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, geez.
Now, you do have, um, hold on.
Yep.
Thank you.